Thank you. It is to confirm the minutes of the council meeting, which took place on the 12th of January, February even. Are you agreed that I sign these as a correct record?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I will sign these later. Apologies for absence, Mr. Taylor. Are there any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've received apologies from councillors Mike Hodge, Nick Holder, Carol King, Robert Knowles, Dennis Lee, Wyatt Ramsdale, Stephen Reynolds, Jeanette Stennett, Stuart Stennett, and Ross Welland.
Thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interest. Council, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interests to declare? Mr. Taylor?
None received in advance, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? Thank you very much. We move now to the Mayor's announcements. I have two. The first is that finally, after many years of working towards it, we have officially opened the Memorial Hall in Farnham. And it was a joyous event officially opened by Deputy Lieutenant Tim Sullivan, who stepped in at the very last moment because the Foreign Secretary was called away on urgent business. But I think we all agreed, those of us who were there, that it was a lovely occasion. And I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the team, the executive team, and the officers involved in the unbelievable amount of work that went into getting not just that occasion, but to actually get the thing redesigned and built. So, well done to everyone. Can we give the officers a round of applause, please? The second was the Waverley Design Awards, which were held last week. And this is where we are one of the councils that are continued the practice of giving design awards for various categories of buildings that have gone up in the borough. And again, that was really well attended. And I wish to thank the judges who have given up their time voluntarily to look at all the buildings that were shortlisted. And again, I think everyone will agree that that was a very special evening. So those are the two main announcements. But I would like to take an opportunity to remind all members about the importance of abiding to the rules of debate as set out within the council's constitution. The public expect to see members in this chamber engaging in vigorous and robust debate with one another on ideas, policies, and recommendations. Our code of conduct is not intended to stifle debate, but please be respectful of others and avoid any personal attacks, which only distract from the value of our contributions. As is always the case, if you wish to speak, please indicate by raising your hand, and I will ensure you have your opportunity to. And just so we have an ongoing reminder of that, I have asked officers to create a poster that lists the Nolan Principles of Public Office. And those will be posted in the Members' Room, in this council chamber, just as Surrey County Council does this now, just as a gentle reminder of what those principles are, just in case we forget. So those are the Mayor's announcements. We now move on to item five on the agenda, questions from the Member of Public. Have we received any questions from members of the public?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item six, questions by members. Have any questions been received by members?
None received.
Thank you. Item seven are motions. Have there been any motions received from members?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Well, we're off to a flying start. Excellent. Item eight on the agenda, we're moving into more substantive items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, colleagues, and members of the public. I am pleased to move the minutes of the Executive of the 12th of March, and I believe I have a seconder.
Pleased to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have three key items in Part One and a number of items for noting in Part Two. The first item in Part One recommending, making a recommendation to council is entitled "Place-Shaping Waverley", Executive Item 82/18. And as members will know, we have a very important key document now within Waverley, which is our corporate strategy. And we also have a very significant document within Waverley, adopted last autumn, which is our economic development strategy. That also, coupled with our lawfully adopted local plan, brings us to a very timely place in terms of looking more substantially now at place shaping. We've talked about that. We've said right from the start of this administration, some three years ago, that place shaping would be key for this council, and we wanted to move forward with that. We're now actually at a stage where we have the funding available, and we're proposing with this item to actually set up a place-shaping reserve fund, an exciting, community-led project such as, and the proposal is that we will start with Farnham and Master Planning Farnham. This came before council as an executive item last week, and it was unanimously endorsed by the Executive. The great thing here, as I say, is that it draws on all our existing strategies that we've been putting in place. It recommends the council earmarks up to £250,000 from the one-off financial gain from our participation in the Business Rate Pilot to actually fund this. And the real crucial thing here is that it'll help to unlock other aspects of funding so that we can really shape our borough, not just for the next five or 10 years, but for the future generations. As I say, the great thing here is that we will be engaging with local communities, local stakeholders. We've already, as I say, had some very successful conversations around Farnham and talking to both Farnham Town Council and Surrey County Council. And I think what also shows the buy-in coming from the various tiers of local government is the fact that Waverley and Surrey are earmarking money towards this funding, but also Farnham Town Council have really bought into it and are being incredibly supportive and funding a proportion to the tune of £10,000 as well. So again, I think it's just great to see everyone really wanting something to work, willing it to work, and actually working towards that real goal. The plan is that we will, subject to agreement by council this evening, we will be in a position to brief the consultants involved very quickly, because that's what people want. They don't want this to be a talking shop. They actually want to see plans and actions coming from this and be looking to come back to council in September, October with an actual strategy, an action plan, so that people can see this actually moving forward and really starting to work with the rest of the developments, the rest of the things that are happening within our borough to really start to take it forward. So I commend the recommendations before you to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor. All I can say is, at last, we have been working on this sort of thing for some years now, and at last we are getting our act together, and something is going to happen. And what I'm pleased about is that we're going to do it as a group of people, and not as we've done so often in the past with very important projects, with individual little groups, all vying for position and all coming up with different views as to who started what and who did what. We are working on this together, and I'm pleased to see that the County Council, the Town Council, and indeed the residents, and I'm particularly delighted that we are starting in Farnham. My only concern is very much one of neighbourhood planning. Farnham was the first to in fact have a neighbourhood plan. We have worked on it with the people that we represent, and they have come up with what I think is a very, very good plan that we all like and working to. But please, I am concerned that the government keep changing their mind and moving the goalposts. And we think we're working to a neighbourhood plan that is going to deliver, and then we suddenly find that it's not delivered because the government have decided on something different. So I hope, Madam Mayor, that the officers will take on board the fact that, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm delighted that this is happening, but that we are going to move forward, and we are going to find the funding for this. But we have got to make sure we all know precisely what we are doing and working together. I hope that every single member of this council will vote in favour of this place-shaping fund. Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Frost. We know that you have been working towards this for many years, so it's nice to see your efforts coming to fruition. Councillor Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it will be no secret to most members in this chamber that over the past few years I have not been happy with the attitude of Waverley towards Farnham Town. So I am delighted to see that things are changing and that there is a huge desire to cooperate with, between the Borough Council, the County Council, and the Town Council. I am further encouraged and delighted to learn that people from Farnham Town Council will be involved in this project from day one, so that it will not suddenly arrive on our desks for consultation as a fait accompli. I am thoroughly in favour of this, and I thank everybody concerned with getting it going, because I think this is a wonderful thing, which will do a lot to heal past rifts, as well as being very useful for the town and the borough.
Thank you for that, Councillor Ward. Councillor Coburn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to endorse what previous colleagues have said. I think this is terrific. I hate the word "place shaping", I hate the word "vision", but I've learnt to live with them both. You know, I like to do things rather than sit and imagine. But I do really welcome this initiative, which is why, as a Town Council, I spoke up in favour of supporting it, not only sort of mentally, but also by giving some money towards it, because we just wanted to demonstrate how important we think this is for the town. We've, as Councillor Frost said, we've had initiatives over initiatives and initiatives about initiatives. We've had everything thrown at us in Farnham without a penny to deliver any of it. And it's only by something as large scale as this, and with the support of the three authorities, that we will get some action out of all the words, and I'm really looking forward to that. I will put a plea in for the neighbourhood plan, nearly finished its Reg 16. It has been important, and the reason it's important to the town is because it's been bottom-up. It really has been written by the people of Farnham, and that's why the people of Farnham like it. And again, we've got to make sure with this initiative that, right from the start, the people of Farnham, as Councillor Ward has said, are truly involved in it and have a chance to shape the town in which they live and work. We all love our towns, and whenever I go, and you will know as Mayor, Madam Mayor, all the towns are different, but they're all lovely in their own ways. So I hope we get it right in Farnham, and then I hope we take this out to all the other towns and retain what I've always said is special about Waverley. Every single settlement, large or small, is distinctive, and that's what makes Waverley so special. So I'm delighted, I will be fully supporting this, and delighted we actually have an initiative of this size working in this borough. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Councillor Coburn. And again, I know you have worked so hard on the neighbourhood plans, and we've all noticed the efforts that you have put, and you should be commended for that. Thank you very much. Councillor Beaman?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. What a wonderful legacy we're leaving to the new administration of this council, I would say. It's the past, when I came to this council, I was very much in the mind that, you know, we're here to help the residents. And political, you know my views, I don't believe that local government is very well administered by political parties, but actually gives it a part and say that at last, I agree, that at last we're going to work together for the benefit of the borough. I think that's very important indeed. I think also, I think I would like to, and I will be fully supporting this, and if I'm a member of the administration, I shall actively support it, I can tell you. But that's in the lap of the gods, of course. But I do think credit must be given, I think, to two other people who are not councillors here, one of whom has sat in the public gallery today, Mark, and in fact John Neil, who have actually been behind pushing this initiative forward. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Beaman. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. But not unlike the February budget, this looks like a friendly and benign pre-election sop to residents. No one can argue against an offer of careful, integrated planning, quality design, and architecture, obviously. But of course, we can't separate place shaping, whatever you prefer to call it, from the impact of the recent town cramming gone mad, which comes from this administration's weak acceptance of Inspector Paul's excessive housing numbers and the numbers from elsewhere. Those numbers took proper account of neither the protection Cranley should have due to underlying whirling clay and resulting flood risk problems, nor the limitation on housing development that applies to the rest of the borough through habitats and other environmental legislation. So what can residents draw from this place-shaping initiative? Well, it would seem obvious that the funding and newfound dedication to proper planning should have directed the local plan. It should have been done long ago. And certainly for Farnham and Cranley, the past four years have probably been the darkest in Waverley's 45-year history. And with LPP Two left until after the elections, and planning inspectors overriding carefully put-together neighbourhood plans, I think residents can safely assume that the borough has even worse to come. So we need to be on our guard and strong in future. There has been a legal requirement for action plans in the legislation, in our legislative legislation, for the past 12 years, so I think residents might be delighted to find that a solution's going to be found within a few months now. But what is the place-shaping offer here? Well, there's a little kickstart funding for Farnham's Town Centre initiative with residents' money, of course, to help Farnham find a solution to our suboptimal pedestrian and traffic conditions. We all applaud the efforts, of course, made by residents, members, and local groups to identify town centre improvements. But recently, and over the past 30 years or more, these have always come to nothing, and we're hoping for far better. As always, the years go by, and there's no progress from highways on assessing the likely consequences, nor any real progress on the mitigation, the alternative routes first, that Farnham has always said that we will need if we're going to close off or restrict the main A-roads and divert them, Upper Hale Road, all the rest of the age-old problems. It's Groundhog Day, isn't it? For Cranley, there's an offer of better planning of the new leisure centre and Village Way. How wonderful. That makes everything in the garden rosy for Cranley. I hope you're very happy over there now. I imagine that for the rest of the borough, well, you're going to have to wait until after the elections to find out what's in store for the rest of the borough. Now, how genuine is this offer? Well, if it's genuine, the council must place proper design and assessment before any political urge to grant blind consent. But in reality, it's clear from the Brightwell saga that the council's saying one thing whilst doing the opposite. For instance, on Friday, the Town Council's Planning Group Chairman met on-site with parish and borough officers to study the dog flood access problems, the two-metre land-level clash we've gone on about for 10 years. All there agreed that planning application, revised design, flood compensation, due assessments, and revised fire and servicing strategies should be required of Crest, as we've been telling you for a long time, and it looks like Surrey highways in Crest now also accept that the pedestrianisation proposals for East Street are impractical. So will the council now address East Street properly? If so, stop digging until a practical design's emerged. And in summary, whilst anything's better than nothing, it really is too little, too late for Farnham and Cranley. The administration's denied the borough and its residents the protection from inappropriate development due in environmental law. You've needlessly wrecked parts of our borough, members of knowing you deliberately granted consents without the required assessment of the consequences in defiance of your Nolan Principles, which require that you justify your decisions. You continue to steadfastly refuse to tell residents why you've spent a decade refusing to carry out the assessments and the consequences. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm afraid you're out of time. Thank you. Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I'm broadly in support of these proposals. It's clear they've been in the works for a very long time, probably too long, and I think people have been waiting them for some time. I actually do have some sympathy for the arguments Councillor Hyman has put forward, and I think the dark times that he's mentioned for Cranley and Farnham have been capped in the last few months by incoming dark times for Golluming and its villages, with Oxford Park, and Milford Golf Course, with the infrastructure that it is not providing because of its lack of sill. However, I will be supporting this, because I do think it's a good idea. The thing that I just want to highlight is that this is obviously coming predominantly from a windfall, and I want to ensure and hope that you will give your assurances that Golluming and Cranley and Hazelmead will benefit from similar schemes as soon as possible, which will equally be led from the Town Council level outwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Follows. I have a number of more speakers. Could I please ask that wherever possible, if you try to introduce new points rather than repeat points that are already made, if that's possible? Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to comment on this place-shaping strategy, it's been coming for a long time. We now have the building blocks in place. We've got the strategy, corporate strategy in place, economic development. And of course, we now have the local community producing their neighbourhood plans. Now, the neighbourhood plans are going to be at the real base of this place-shaping strategy. It's going to be based around what the community wants. It's about community cohesion. And we're here, as a council, to benefit our citizens. Now, no matter what we do sometimes, whatever we say, whatever we're trying to do, we have people criticising unnecessarily. This is a really positive move. The executive have fought hard to get this. We've fought really hard because we know what the citizens want. And I'd like to pay tribute to the officers, to our chief executive, and to Graham Clark and his team for all the work they put in into the rates pilot. Without that, we wouldn't be discussing this here tonight. So it's a really good move, and I ask all members to support this wholeheartedly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Edwards. Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think any town with a degree of civic pride, as Farnham has, will benefit from having a master plan, and I support it thoroughly. And I thank those that have put the effort into getting the funds together, and I wish them well. However, there's one fly in the ointment, so to speak, and that is the intention to pedestrianise the Farnham Town Centre. I fear that it will take a large amount of money to do the job properly, and because of strange circumstances, it's very likely that a fund-saving device will be found, which will be to divert the traffic onto an existing road pattern that is assumed to be able to take it. I would like to emphasise that there is only one alternative route for the north-south traffic passing through Farnham, and that alternative route is already heavily loaded. And I won't bore members with the figures, but I do have them to hand. Would I would urge, please, if in the brief to the consultants, it's made perfectly plain, that we will not look kindly upon any move to simply shift a problem from one place to another. That's my case at that point.
Thank you, Councillor Fraser. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing further to add to the excellent thoughts of my colleagues.
Thank you. Councillor Adams, have you anything more to add?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would just like to correct one misconception which appears to have arisen, and that is that this council has not cooperated with Farnham to date. And as somebody who was personally involved with working with Councillor Coburn on the Farnham neighbourhood plan, I can comment definitely that we were involved in that, and we did come to an agreement. We discussed the various sites, et cetera, at great length, and we did support the Farnham neighbourhood plan at inspection. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And finally, Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome this proposal, and I will be certainly voting in favour of it. I rise only to correct some misleading statements from Councillor Follows. He mentions the lack of infrastructure associated with Aaron's Hill and the Milford Golf Course developments. I just remind him that there were significant infrastructure proposals which were accepted as a part of those planning applications, including in particular the saving of Green Oak School. And without additional housing, we would not have had the £800,000 which goes with that development, which has secured the future of that school. It's something that he voted against. He also mentions, Madam Chairman, that the community infrastructure levy is late. Well, of course, he opposed the local plan. Without the local plan, we certainly wouldn't have had the community infrastructure levy. So had we gone along with his voting, we wouldn't have the local plan, and we certainly wouldn't have the community infrastructure levy. Thank you.
Councillor Follows, if it is a point of personal comment, I cannot take it, but if it is a personal statement, then you may.
I will merely just correct the record. I did vote against the local plan because of the two modifications that included Aaron's Hill. I voted in favour of SIL when it came up, because it's actually a very positive scheme. And I will remind Councillor Martin that although infrastructure contributions were obtained as part of the Aaron's Hill application, it was roughly half as much as would have been obtained under SIL only six weeks later. Thank you.
Thank you. Leader, are there any more speakers? I think we've had quite a balanced debate. Leader, would you like to sum up?
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I think it's really important that we acknowledge the fact that in terms of Farnham, the whole point of this and with other towns and villages as this progresses is that it's there to actually complement and work with other plans that are in place, such as the neighbourhood plans. And in terms of the actual, that's what's recognised within the master planning process. Nothing here, we're not giving the consultants, we won't be giving them a brief such as they have to deliver pedestrianisation, for example, to Councillor Fraser's point. I know there's a lot of concern certainly in the north of Farnham on that particular aspect, certainly within my ward, which I share with Councillor Fraser. You know, I'm very well aware of local feelings. This is specialists coming in to look at everything, and I'm not a specialist, I'm not a technical planner or master planner. It's for them to go away and come back with what will actually work for Farnham and the surrounding villages, bearing in mind what is happening in Farnham at the moment, in terms of development, what we actually have in place, and what we need to actually do to really make Farnham work for everyone for the future. And then, as I've said, we will start to look at the other parts of the borough. So Farnham will be the lead on this, but it's by no means the only one, because this will be, if you like, the pilot, and then we will be moving full steam ahead with our other towns and villages. And I commend all five recommendations, Madam Mayor, to council. Thank you.
I have one recommendation. I'm sorry, I've got the recommendation that up to £250,000 of the one-off financial gain from Waverley's participation in the 2018-19 Business Rate Pilot be earmarked to establish a new place-shaping fund. Have I got that right? Monitoring Officer, thank you. Is that agreed, councillors?
Agreed.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Leader, shall we move on to the capital strategy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce Item 83/18, which is the capital strategy. This comes under...
This comes under councillor Hall as portfolio holder for finance, and I understand he has a few words he'd like to say to introduce this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, there isn't a huge amount to say about this item. The capital strategy brings together the processes and the procedures that we use for our cash investments, our deposits, our borrows and so forth. There's very little change from this than last year's. Not much change at all, but it is something that we have to bring to council every year.
Thank you. Yes, any comments or questions from anyone, as councillor Hall has said? Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This has been the product of a lot of hard work by our officers over the years, and every year we try and just tidy it up a little bit, and it has been through audit. Just a couple of things which members of the public of residence should be aware of, as well as members, of course, should be aware of it. On page 25 of your executive papers that came through, not the main agenda thing, but the to-follow executive papers, you'll see on there, and you're aware, but residents may not be quite so aware, that under borrowing it says that with the approval of the property development strategy, this is paragraph 16, overseen by the advisory board and the significant reduction in the new homes bonus funding, it's likely the council will need to borrow in future years to acquire and/or develop commercial property assets in order to generate revenue, which is a little bit of a, I won't say red rag to a bull, it's a little bit of a red rag to our residents, possibly because obviously the idea of gambling, or as it may be seen with large sums of money, could well be a little bit difficult for them, it could be a worry for them. Now, obviously, we've been trying to ensure that we've got the controls in place to make sure that that is not going to be a problem, but any time you're borrowing money to invest, you do put yourself at risk, and certainly in terms of risk of capital losses. So, just, people should be aware of that. And further on page, if I can refer to page 31, a few pages later, again, same sort of position on the page under 2.4.1, it says that for all capital investment, the appropriate level of due diligence will be undertaken, that with the extent and depth reflecting the level of risk being considered in accordance with Waverley's risk appetite statement. I have mentioned before, and particularly at in-house audit committee, my concern that the risk appetite statement where it allows for isolated legal action virtually invites or regulatory breach. I don't want that to be misinterpreted as, oh, well, we've always got little breakings of the law, left, right and centre, because that's how we operate. This is talking about, I'm talking about deliberately and knowingly, knowing what the law is, yet making decisions which are contrary to that. So, you know, the issue here is that I believe the new risk appetite statement can be interpreted as relieving the monitoring officer of his responsibility to report legal non-compliance to members, and that's where my concern lies. This was adopted by the executive in February. We can't go back on it, but we do need to be careful, and I just want members to know, you know, that there is an alternative position to the one that we're given by the authority or by the administration, and we do need to keep an eye on it, and residents should be aware. Thank you.
Councillor Band.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Usually when this topic is raised at council, you see members' eyes gloss over, and almost anything to do with treasury management policies and their links, and even worse when you get to prudential indicators. And so, I'm very glad to see that in this document, there is actually a diagram, I don't like this word, info whatever it is, but there is a diagram on page 27, which I think very helpfully shows how these policies relate to each other. They are important because these policies are the basis of Waverley's financial management process, and they are the basis of one of the great successes of this administration in managing its finances extremely well, and has been complemented by outside bodies to that effect. So, I think we need to recognise that, and need to recognise the importance of these documents. One of the things that we have tried to do this year is through the budget strategy working group, working with officers, and Peter Vickers and his team, and Vicky Beazley in particular have been involved in this, in trying to get the terminology in all these papers consistent with each other. They've all been drafted in the past independently, and this has been a really intensive task to try and bring them together, so they make more coherent sense. So, when one topic is discussed in one paper, it's addressing the same terminology as all the rest of them. So, I hope members will find that more helpful and enable them to get more closely to grip with these important policies. When it comes to borrowing and the statements from our colleague behind me, I do think this council has introduced proper policies for the potential management of borrowing, and also for the management of risk. I am astounded that anybody should suggest that our monitoring officer would not report a legal movement to members for their consideration. I do not believe that happens. I do believe that our officers work within the law and do advise members accordingly. So, I am comfortable with the policies as drafted in these documents. Madam Mayor, you indulge me of this being my last council meeting as a councillor after 16 years, to thank offices as a whole and colleagues for the support and information and help they've given me over the 16 years, and to wish those members who are seeking re-election all the best for the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And may we thank you for those many, everything you've contributed to this council over those 16 years. Councillor Bolton. No? Okay. Councillor Follows?
I did not.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I do thank the councillor who preceded me. I think any service to the local authority for that length of time, regardless of your political party, should be acknowledged and accepted as a great contribution to the local community. So, thank you. I just wanted to also say that I do like an infographic and a process diagram, I think it's extremely helpful. It makes it very clear to those of us who have not been councillors very long what this all actually means. I do share councillor Hyman's reservations regarding investment strategy as a concept, but that is for the opposition, however many we number in the next administration to monitor to our fullest, and for the overview and scrutiny committees to do the same. I assure you that if I am back in the opposition, and many of my colleagues hopefully will join me, that we will be scrutinising every aspect of that as much as we can. My final comment on the point that councillor Hyman made, I don't believe any risk appetite statement in any way undermines the authority of the monitoring officer. It can't physically take away his capacity to refer those things, and so I have no concern on that front, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Beeman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to speak on bar as chair of the, I haven't got it right, value of money and customer service overview and scrutiny committee. As for borrowing, I would like to make the point that this is under review by the scrutiny committee, that, in fact, I would say that Waverley's investment is very cautious indeed, extremely cautious, and all investments have to be made according to strict criteria. And in fact, Waverley is only one of three local authorities in Surrey which hasn't got any borrowing for this purpose whatsoever. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? No. Microphone. Oh, sorry, sorry. Councillor Mulliner.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just add briefly that one of the more useful developments in the last 12 months was the agreement with officers of a very clear property investment strategy, which recognised the importance of being very cautious in investing in commercial property. I think it's done its job this year. It provides very clear guidelines as to what a minimum return is, and I agree with councillor Beeman, prudence has been the watchword, and I'm sure that will continue. So, I think although risk is always present, we have taken every possible means of making sure that any risks we take, we take with our eyes open and only after the most careful consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leader, would you like to sum up?
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. To the points made by councillor Hyman, I think I can sum those up and respond in just a few lines. Gambling, as he very well knows, with public money would be unlawful, and happily, I think I'm safe in, very safe in saying that our approach will be careful and in line with the governance procedures that we've agreed as a council. And to the points made by both councillor Beeman and councillor Mulliner, the strategy before you has been heavily influenced throughout by the input of the scrutiny committees, and I would like to pass on my thanks to them. They've done a really good job on this along with the officers, and I'm pleased to endorse this item and make, again, a clear recommendation to councillors to approve the recommendations before them on this item tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Leader, the recommendation therefore is to approve the capital strategy for 2019-20, the prudential indicators and the treasury management framework for 2019-20. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. The next is SIL, leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The next item before you, members, is item 84/18, and that is SIL governance arrangements, both the criteria and financial thresholds. As I say, a lot of work has gone into that, both from officers, the portfolio holders, but also, again, our scrutiny committees have been involved heavily in this work and feeding back through to the executive prior to the reports coming before you this evening. And I believe there, I'm not sure, but I think there is a speaker on this item, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers on this item? Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I must apologise to members who were at the executive a week ago, that I did indicate and wanted to speak on this item, but was in the members' room chatting to councillor Ward because I didn't realise the meeting had come forward to six o'clock rather than its normal time of course to seven. So, I missed that. So, I would like to cover it now if I may. Just a concern with recommendation five. Recommendation five here says that delegated authorities, it's on page 861, members of your executive bundle, delegated authorities given to the SIL advisory board to propose revisions to the government's arrangements that would be subject to the usual scrutiny process and subject to an annual report to the executive and council. Now, what I wanted to do last week was to suggest that you considered adding a couple of words to the end of that, so that rather than this council noting a report every year, we are endorsing it, in effect. I would like to, just to have the words for endorsement added to the end of that, so that it is no longer, because in the past, obviously, what we've always had, we're talking £94 million worth of money.
Councillor Hyman, are you moving a motion?
Well, no. I'll explain if I may. We're talking £94 million. So, although this seems like a silly thing for me to suggest in a way, £94 million of public money, that's not silly. We want, it would be silly if we were to remove all the usual safeguards we have for that sort of money, to not have decisions to come to the council in future. And I appreciate it can go, it's an executive subgroup, it can, you know, go through those scrutiny arrangements, but ultimately, we as the council should be looking at that. If we've got a report coming to us, we shouldn't just be noting it, we should be looking at it. Now, I'm not going to be able to put this through, it's highly political just before an election, but if another member would like to add, would like to propose that we add the words for endorsement at the end of that, then I will support it, and I think it would make it a lot safer.
Councillor Hyman, it sounds like you're proposing that. Are you proposing an amendment? And if so, do you have a second or?
No, there's not much point in me proposing it because it would be voted down. I think it would be a good thing to do. I think other members here probably also agree with me, and if they do agree with me, I think they should do it. But if they don't agree, it's just wasting everybody's time. So, if somebody else would like to do it, because it's a proper thing to do for this council not to allow £94 million decisions to be done without it going through us, so I would suggest that all we have to do is put in, no, it's not seconding, I'd like somebody else to propose it. If I propose it, it won't go through. It's personal.
No.
So, Madam Mayor, I leave it to others to decide.
The leader has a point of clarification. Leader.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Councillor Hyman, if this may help you, I'm not sure, but last week at the executive that you were unable to attend, we actually made an amendment that was a recommendation coming from the overview and scrutiny committee to item, the recommendation five, and that actually was part of the feedback that we'd had from the overview and scrutiny committee, and were asked to make that amendment. So, I'm not sure if that helps you, but that might be a point of clarification for you.
Sorry, I'm not really allowed to come back, but can I, are you saying that it should already say for endorsement afterwards, but you've missed it out accidentally, or are you saying that this is a revision? I wouldn't know what it was revised from.
Councillor Hyman, what I'm saying to you is that last week at our executive meeting, following on from feedback that we'd had from the overview and scrutiny committee, we actually changed recommendation five, and recommendation five, as it reads now before you, in the recently issued papers, actually incorporates the feedback from the overview and scrutiny committee on that particular item.
Okay.
I hope that just helps to clarify that we took that on board.
That's very clear, leader, that's very clear, that it was proposed after recommendations from the scrutiny committee. So, Mr. Hyman, if you want to propose an amendment, do so, otherwise let's move on. I have other speakers. Thank you. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just personally like to thank the executive for bottom slicing the 10% of the fund which is allocated for SIL for Waverley, basically to be available for smaller parishes and other areas in the borough, which are unlikely to earn SIL themselves. I think that's a great step forward, and I'm delighted the executive have put in the, have recommended it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Adams. Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions on this. Obviously, I still think that we're not going to see a lot of this SIL, but actually, it's good that we have the governance arrangements for when we actually do have it. That's entirely sensible and sound, and I agree with that completely, and we'll be supporting this. Couple of questions I had, though. The templates themselves were actually determining the points score for the allocation. Will those completed templates be available for other members to see and for the public to see, or are they going to be only the province of the SIL board itself? Because you also let me know how frequently the membership of the SIL board will be reviewed. I understand that it is made up not according to the usual committee rules, but with the best intentions to make it so, I believe the wording was. Could you just clarify on that, too? And also, I'm sure it probably says in here somewhere, but just so, for my information, if you could clarify on what the 5% administrative SIL will be actually used for, that will be retained by Waverley, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speakers, so leader, oh, David, sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Beeman, I apologise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, the amended wording in number five, it wasn't because there was meant to be a misgiving, I think it was one of the, I think it was because the bank actually proposed the revised wording to strengthen it up. So, that was recognised at that point, let me make that quite clear. Two, the bottom slicing, I think also came with the discussion at the advisory board, which I'm a member, I assume, so there is not, it's not just all one party on that advisory board. And three, yes, I think the bottom, oh, I don't know what I'm saying, 94 million, I would just say to you, it's over a long period of time, actually. The SIL is, be careful, it's important because you may not eat that many golden eggs, but we'll try our best.
Thank you councillor Beeman. Councillor Storey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of small points. In answer to councillor Follows, it's not 5% will automatically be used, it's up to 5%, and it's used for administration, for salaries and so on. Can I just point out that under recommendation four, any money which is going to be spent from SIL is subject to executive approval, and anything over two and a half million is subject to full council approval. And so, this is not something which the advisory board can just go ahead And so this is not something which the advisory board can just go ahead and spend things willy-nilly. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councillor Storey. Leader, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's not a lot to sum up. I think Councillor Storey's very kindly answered most of my question, most of the questions that were raised. But to the one that Councillor Follows did raise, which hasn't been answered yet, about the evidence, if you like, and that being available, there's absolutely no reason why not. I think, given some of the concerns that have been expressed, we do need to be as transparent as possible. And certainly, as the proposals will then come to executive, I would envisage, and having just had a very quick word with Mr. Clark, as you probably noticed, that there is no reason why those can't actually be included in the supporting reports, which I think all members across party would agree would be the most transparent and best course of action there. Hopefully, the other questions have been clarified. And on that note, Madam Mayor, I'd like to commend the recommendations to council.
Thank you. There are, councillors, there are five recommendations to council as set out on page two of the To Follow book. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Notice of statements on part two items I have received for executive eighty-five fifteen, the Environment ONS report structures to deliver SIL. Councillor Hyman, you wish to speak?
Thank you, eighty-five eighteen, I think your phone that is. But it's simply a matter of, yeah, I have to put my other hat on as the chairman of the Environment, Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and just thank the task group very much indeed for the hard work that they did. It's awkward, because it was, we also had the SIL advisory board effectively working, you know, in a similar but different direction. And I thank them very much indeed for the work they put in, and I hope that what they've come up with is useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Deenis.
Thank you. We were going to discuss this at the executive, as you said, but thank you for allowing us to go home early that night. That was appreciated. I mean, the overview and scrutiny did have a very thorough review about the delivery structure, and they were a task and finished group. They've come up with about eighteen recommendations, and it's going to take us some time to go through those in detail. But when the advisory board next meets, we will be going through that process to see what we can actually gain and improve. This is the start of a journey. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item, executive item eighty-eight slash eighteen, planning peer review. Councillor Hyman, again.
Does anybody else do any homework? Eighty-eight eighteen, peer review, yes. This was just as a matter of information for the, for members and for any residents that are interested. The proposal that came out of the peer review, there was a lot of good in there, there were a lot of things in the peer review which I think a number of members thought perhaps didn't apply to us, really, or looked like not sufficient research had been put into it, or sufficient understanding from the consultants of how we do things, where perhaps we do things completely wrong. But the proposal was, or the crux was, it was a proposal for one joint planning committee and no area committees, so remove the four area committees, and cut down the JPC from twenty-three to, I think it was nine to twelve members. And they would sit and take six to nine planning applications in one sitting. And that has not been pursued. It's on hold within this. I'm not trying to scare anybody, but obviously, in terms of, you know, we're looking to be making savings next year and for the next couple of years, there are advantages. I keep an open mind to it, although I know some people are very strongly against it. I think if the right controls were in place in this council, we would probably be able to benefit from such a system. But certainly after seventh of May, we could have a different administration here that could do things differently. There may be an advantage to us. But just to mention to members and the public that that isn't being pursued at this time before this election. So, you know, maybe we'll be looking at that again later on. Okay, thanks.
Councillor Deenis.
Thank you. This was an update report on the work undertaken in July last year. And since the review, I think all members have had training, and we've had a workshop on the findings. On the twenty-fifth of February, the Environment ONS Considered Action Plan have made a number of observations. I'd like to thank them for their hard work and their detailed analysis. The actions and observations arising from this peer review are now included in the service plan. So for two thousand and nineteen and twenty, we can monitor it through this service plan. So I think we are making progress, but we've got to learn to walk before we run on this one. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Deenis. I have no other speakers on part two items. Leader, does that conclude your minutes?
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, thank you very much. That concludes the minutes of the executive held on the twelfth of March, twenty nineteen.
Leader, thank you very much indeed. We now move on to item nine on the agenda, which is the minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee. Councillor Simon Inchbald to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee held on the twenty-fifth of February, and I believe I have a second there.
I wish to second, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, there are no items in part one, and I have no speakers in part two, and that concludes what has to be one of the shortest reports ever.
Thank you very much, Councillor Inchbald. So we move on now to the minutes of the Audit Committee. Councillor John Gray, Vice Chairman of the Audit Committee, to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to move the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting on the fourth of March, and I have a second there. Pleased to second, Madam Mayor. I have three items under part one, starting with the first item, which is the process and documentation for supplementary estimates. This came about because of discussions within the Audit Committee for clarification as to how supplementary estimates were processed and how they could be made more transparent for members and for members of the public. And following discussions within the Audit Committee, it was agreed that we would ask officers to look at this and to come back with a recommendation. We're grateful, too, the officers for coming back and making the proposal which was agreed at the Audit Committee. I don't think there's very much more I can say on it, but other members may have comments.
Does anyone have anything to say about that? I think you can probably move on, Councillor Gray. I have no other speakers.
Thank you. Do we want to move the recommendation?
Oh, yes, sorry. There are two recommendations to council to update the council's financial regulations as set out on page three of the council agenda book. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The second item is income and debt collection policy. This is a new document, which really, document which goes through and looks at all of our income and our debt collection policies and puts them into one document. It really is for clarification and transparency. A lot of work's been put into this, and I think there was an earlier comment on the quality of documents that are coming before committees. Certainly, I would like to endorse that we are getting clearer documents, we're getting consistency in terms of numbering, version control, and in certain cases, a glossary of terms, which is extremely helpful to members, and I'm sure to members of the public. I think committee members, sorry, I think council members really should read this document, because I think it's a very good explanation of how our income is controlled and how we deal with debt policies, including for vulnerable people. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So all I say, if there's any comments, I'll respond.
Any comments, or anyone wish to speak? You're off the hook again, Councillor Gray. There's a recommendation which, that the revised income and debt collection policy as attached as annex three to the minutes be adopted. Is that agreed, councillors?
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the third item on here is the revised anti-fraud and corruption policy. This is quite an extensive update of documents that already exist. It reflects new government guidance, new legislation in there, and has to come to council, I think it's once every two years, for endorsement. It covers a wide area, it's an extensive document. I don't think it would go in the classification as a good read, but certainly councillors should be aware of it. Things like the whistleblowing policy, very important to us. As an audit committee, we do ask officers how often our policy is actually used, and it gives us an indication that they are being effective. I think the other thing that's in here is it's important that we actually take policies like this, and we make sure that there's training throughout the council. And that is something that I know Mr. Clark is very keen to do with his team. That's all I'd like to say on that item.
Any comments from anyone? Councillor Hyman?
I'm sorry, I just have to completely disagree with that. I think it's very well written, and I think it is a must-read for all members. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Martin.
Madam Mayor, I must make a plea. I did stop to read it last night, and I'm sorry, I did fall asleep.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Councillors, the recommendation to council is that the revised anti-fraud and corruption policy be approved, and that offers be, officers, I think not offers, be instructed to cascade using suitable media to publicize these documents to the appropriate residents. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We come on now to part two. I'm not aware we've got any speakers, but I'm sure you'll tell me if there are.
No, there aren't. So, does that conclude your minutes?
That concludes the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Gray. We now move on to item eleven on the agenda, which is the minutes of the Standards Committee. Councillor Michael Goodrin is chairman of the Standards Committee to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have pleasure in presenting the minutes of the Standards Committee held on the twelfth of March, two thousand and nineteen. I think I have a second there.
Pleased to second, Madam Mayor.
There are three matters in part one. The first item is the appointment of independent persons. The situation now is that we have seven councils that are sharing the pool of independent persons. I suspect, I think it was four before. And therefore, we, the councils concerned, the seven district councils concerned, are recommending that the pool is increased to seven people, which are listed at twenty-eight point four. I'd emphasize this doesn't have any financial implication, because these independent persons are not paid, they only get their expenses as and when they have to do something. And therefore, we have the recommendation that they be accepted.
Any questions or comments? If not, then there is one recommendation, that the seven persons named on page three of the agenda supplement are appointed as independent persons for Waverley for a four-year term from May, twenty nineteen. Councillors, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
The next item, Madam Mayor, is the Members' Code of Conduct, which is always a good read, and keeps you riveted. I think one of the things that we have been doing is trying to provide additional clarification and to cover various procedural matters which haven't been properly covered. And I particularly refer to page eighty-three on the supplemental papers, which does set out the Nolan Principles, and actually gives some clarification as to what the seven principles mean, which I think is a helpful addition. It also should make it clear that it doesn't impose any additional burdens on members, but it does, for example, help on the procedures for recording sensitive information on the register of interests. I should also make it clear that in the next administration, we will be looking, or the council will be looking, at the standards on public life has been published, and we need to ensure that our code of conduct complies with that, and also other matters referred to in twenty-nine point seven. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Councillor Hyman?
Just information for members to note that what they've just been referred to in the Members' Code of Conduct, Councillor Goodred was obviously quite right, because he chairs the committee, that in his committee papers for the last Standards Committee meeting, there were two versions of that, and the new one being put forward by the, by governments, actually, it's coming from Communities and CLG, I think, isn't it, is slightly different and does have some differences to it. So don't get too used to that, because we're probably adopting different wording in a few months' time when it comes forward again. Thanks.
Anyone else? Right, there, Councillor Goodred, would you like to sum up?
I've nothing to sum up, save that, as I have made clear, this is the code of conduct that will apply when the new council takes over, subject to this committee looking at the committee on standards in public life, and there may be some amendments then.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Goodred. There is one recommendation, that the revised Waverley Members' Code of Conduct be approved, and that all Waverley towns and parish councils are sent the revised code of conduct, and encouraged to adopt the changes in their own code of conduct in order to maintain consistency with their principle of authority. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Finally, Madam Mayor, we have the review of scheme of delegation. I know this can be sensitive to some members, but I can assure you that it's no, no great changes are being made. We are just, for example, dealing with the fact that when the last set of scheme of delegation was looked at in two thousand and seventeen, there wasn't an investment advisory board in existence at the time. So we've got to cover that, as well as other items that are referred to in the agenda item. And it has one recommendation. Thank you.
Any speakers? Councillor Hyman?
Yeah, apologies for this, but if I refer you to page twenty-seven of the main agenda papers, which is the, it's the minutes, actually. So it was the Leader's words on the February budget meeting. Halfway down that page, it says that we will be launching a full review of fees and charges in the coming year. So when you read that in conjunction with the changes which are in the other bundle of papers, the exec papers at page one hundred and four, so I can refer you to that, on page one hundred and four, eight A, near the bottom, says that there is a new, we have introduced a new delegated authority, or we're about to, which says, "to approve the adoption of newer increased fees and charges within the schedule of fees and charges, after consultation with the portfolio holder of finance, and subject to the annual approval by council of the complete schedule of fees and charges as part of the budget setting." And all I'm asking for is clarification, if that isn't, if that isn't too much, because is this a delegation that's only after the council budget approval, or does it allow delegated powers to be able to change the fees in between budgets? And I'm not sure which that is, so if you can explain.
Councillor Goodred?
You know, it can, in other words, does the budget give retrospective ratification, in effect, to the, to what, to changes that may have been made midterm, you know, mid-year? Are we allowed to change the fees mid-year or not, according to this? Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Hyman. If one looks at the committee minutes of the Standards Committee, and refer to paragraph thirty point two, you will see on page seventy of the supplemental papers, it does make it clear that this is designed to avoid the need to take new revised, revised fees and charges to council mid-year, such as when something else is introduced. It's not intended that fees and charges will be hacked about every, every so often, midterm or whatever. It's a part of the budget process. But there was an occasion, for example, where the new animal welfare licensing activities involving animals fee schedule had to be approved by full council in December eighteen, which seemed an awful large thing to crack a nut with that. And therefore, if something new turns up, then it can be sorted out under delegated powers. But fees and charges will always But fees and charges will always be sorted out in the budget process, including car park charges and all those things. That's all subject to full council in the budget process, and that will not change.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Anyone else? If not, then I'll move to the recommendation, and that is that the council approves the revised scheme of delegation. Councillors, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, not surprisingly, I have had no questions under part two, because there are no matters in part two, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, councillor Goodrich.
Thank you.
Item 12 on the agenda is electoral services item, non-attendance by a councillor for six months. This report is on page 129 of the Agenda supplement. Under section 86 of the Local Government Act 1972, the council now needs to declare the ward seat vacant. Are there any speakers, or is that agreed? Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The mayor at the beginning of this session referred to this chamber as a place of vigorous debate and ideas, and that only happens when councillors actually show up. There are many of you in this room I disagree with frequently, but I recognise that to disagree with me, you have to be here, and I recognise the service you put in by being here. However, the attendance and contribution levels of some members of this chamber is frankly an insult to the residents that elected you. Many of those ones that I'm referring to are actually not here tonight, although there are some that would be on the cusp of that. This now former member has crossed even the legal line, which is, in my view, already too generous. I find it particularly distasteful that this councillor, that is the subject of this item, has not even responded to officers seeking an explanation. So my final thing to ask, now I have expressed my displeasure at this, is has this former member continued to collect his allowance during his period of absence? Thank you.
That's what I thought, yeah. The councillor in question collected his allowances until he stopped being a councillor, so he's no longer a councillor. And I just would like to stress that democratic services do remind people if they are moving, they have it four months, they have a red flag that signals to individuals, due process has been followed, it is the law that a councillor must attend a meeting, so this is a technicality. The council has no choice but to declare the position vacant. Councillor Peter Martin, I believe you probably have something that you might refer to in the form of trousers for such people.
Madam Mayor, I think we all, of course, regret non-attendance, but of course, non-attendance over many years is not restricted to one particular party, and this is regretfully a thing that happens from time to time with all political parties, and I regret it on all those cases. Thank you.
Councillor Martin, I hope you'll indulge me, I wanted to refer to what you coined such people at a previous time. You call them chinos, councillors here in name only. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you. Although I fully understand and appreciate the concerns that councillor Follows has shown, I would ask that he perhaps doesn't prejudge this, because we worked alongside this particular councillor, Christian councillor Hesse, for a couple of years, and I found him a very good councillor, who wasn't necessarily, perhaps he was freer with his thoughts and his criticisms of the councillor, whatever, than is normally expected. I found him to be a very, very nice fellow, and I'm certainly not going to prejudge him on this. I'm sure he has his reasons, I don't know what they are, and I'm not going to predetermine it or prejudge, and I wish him the very best in future.
Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just endorse what councillor Hyman has said there? We're a very discreet council, we pride ourselves on looking after not only our residents but also each other, and we've had, over the years, people who've had very serious illnesses, many of whom have not actually wanted to make it public. And we have kept it very discreet, we have just subtly extended the time, and we haven't judged them, we've known that there had to be a special reason. And I would hate to get to the stage where we have to spell out every person's intimate details, just because somebody is going to make a rather unpleasant and unnecessarily barbed comment about a councillor. So I do think, before we say anything about a fellow councillor and his or her absence, we should make sure that we are not treading on very, very sensitive grounds and being unnecessarily cruel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Coburn. So, we come to the end of the meeting now, and this is the last meeting of this council before the election, and I want to say a huge thank you to our colleagues that are leaving us to do whatever they want to be doing that's more fun. And it is, for those of you, some of you have been councillors for a very long time, councillor Ban, 16 years, we will miss you. And I think all of us who will hopefully be re-elected, those that are standing again, will join me in saying a huge thank you for having served the community, the communities of Waverley, and for having given your time so generously. So thank you very much, everyone. And one in particular that I would also like to thank is Liz Wheatley, because you've been around a very long time. I can't single everyone out, because of course, you know, I could say, will all those not standing again please stand up? But somehow, I'm not sure that that would be as open as it should be, so I'll just leave it there. But I'll, instead, I'll just say, join, please join me in the mayor's parlour for a drink. There are no exempt items to consider, so thank you for attending, and the meeting is now closed.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.